Okay, good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Our work session is called to order. We are a few minutes behind, so let's be mindful of that and try to catch up here where we can. We will follow the agenda as posted. Item 2.01, Transformation Update. Dr. King?
Chairman Houston, members of the board. Item 2.01, Transformation Update, will consist of Open Campus Information followed by Educational Planning update. And so, as we take a step back to Open Campus, I had an opportunity to, of course, visit within the last 24 to 48 hours and was very pleased to see the students that were in the seats and excited about being in the seats and had a chance to even address the group. So, it's good to see that it is coming into fruition and we know that we have some additional steps that we're going to take to even go further in terms of what our needs are. But for the board, I would just remind you of what I call the three pronged purpose, and I won't repeat those. I think you probably can speak those in your seat right now, because we've said, we talked about those so many times. And so, but it helps to articulate to our community and our stakeholders the extreme importance of why we need to have such program in place and remember that we're working to have deep quality with what we do and moving at a pace that would allow that. And this is the first program of this nature in the state at this point. So, I say that to say, to mean that some creativity and innovation, those things have gone into the planning and I applaud the team and the work, Dr. Simmons, for facilitating and working with all of the parties to be where we are and Mr. Coleman as Executive Director for Open Campus and doing so as well. With that said, I will defer to Dr. Simmons to speak to several components in terms of enrollment, starting school, and anything else that would be appropriate.
Thank you, Dr. King, Dr. Houston, members of the board. I am happy to have John Coleman join me as we give you an update on the Norfolk Public Schools Open Campus Magic Johnson Bridgescape Academy. We have five MPS teachers that have been hired and one counselor employed for the open campus. Magic Johnson Bridgescape employees consists of a Program Director, an Enrollment Coordinator, and an Office Manager. Tremendous hats off to Rex Gay and his team for pulling off magic with conceiving what it ought to look like with regard to what our requests were for the rooms and we have new floors and carpeting, electrical work. Everything has been done on time and well within and slightly under budget. So, he, his team should be commended for that. Students began orientation on September 24th and 25th, and it was right around that time that we began to engage Norfolk Housing and Redevelopment because they pulled out all stops and hit the ground to find these students. So, we had, typically it takes them 150 days to identify students and get them in the seat. We pulled this off in 15 days. Is that right, John? We pulled it off in 15 days, identified and enrolled our students. So, the first full day for students was September 29th. And many thanks to Helen Phillips. She is providing lunch and breakfast every day for these students. We have completed 131 enrollment forms and these students have been rolled into the program and that helps create the waiting list. 100 are attending, 131 enrolled. Six of those students have withdrawn since they enrolled because they're working, which speaks to the need to begin the evening program as soon as we can stabilize what we're doing. We have currently 102 students enrolled that have attended and two of those would be two of the ones that have dropped out. So, we have 100 students on the roll. 20 of those students are special education students. Several students are expecting. 10 of those students are homeless. Two of them came to us and enrolled in this academy who were homeschooled previously. One student has been living in Norfolk who came all the way from Newport News. He was doing a GED. He enrolled in Norfolk into this program. We have kids represented at this school from every high school attendance area. The 25 over age for grade students and students that are behind on credits, the Enrollment Coordinator is currently contacting their parents. Bob Kleinbell has gotten the list of names. He's done a dry run. He will be able to tell the parents exactly what time they'll be picked up and what time they'll be dropped off. Transportation for these students will begin October 6th. We couldn't get these kids in before because we had to make sure we had our 100 students on the roll and John worked really hard to organize how we contacted parents and notified them that kids would be attending. A grant is in the process of being resubmitted to Opportunity Inc. We're working that. They indicated they would fund us as soon as we started the school, so we're back onto that again. As a next step, I'd like to let you know that the MPS evaluation team consisting of Dr. Karen Bailey, John Coleman, Dr. Charbonne, and Dr. Simmons, myself, we will get together with ODU and we will be working with their staff to provide a third-party evaluation so that we can collect anecdotal data, scientific data, and be able to use that data to inform how we continue to build a successful program. And that will start right away as soon as we can meet and agree to terms. The Advisory Committee will be formed comprised of community leaders, NRHA, MPS staff, Board, School Board representatives, and students. And those names, of course, will be agreed upon and submitted to Dr. King for approval. Branding is not there yet. It's, hey, there's a seven-by-seven foot sign that will go on that big blue wall. It is being created and there'll be lots of signage in the school. That's coming. I wanted to let you know that. Rex has ordered a canopy, so no longer will it say Coronado. I don't think it's going to say anything. It's going to be blue, just in case we need for it to stay blue. And the marquee will be built on the outside of the school so that we have signage. So, when people drive by, they know it's our building. We're planning a grand opening celebration the first week in November and it would be wonderful to have Magic Irvin Johnson there at that time. So, we're trying to work schedules for that. And now that the seats are filled, Elizabeth Mather is ready to have the media come in. She pulled off Hercules feet on yesterday and got us extensive news coverage on the 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock, 11 o'clock news and again on this morning. And her team is ready to show that clip and then John Coleman and I will answer questions. I really want to commend John also because in spite of all of the other things that he's doing, he's been on-site a lot, working with the teachers and making sure that things are running smoothly and it takes the whole team to make it work.
A drop out just opened in Norfolk this week. It's the first school of its kind in Virginia. Karen Hopkins shows us how this breakthrough in education is giving students a second chance. Here in Norfolk, more than 100 students are enrolled in the new Open Campus School. It's the first one in the state.
I'm very interested in getting my high school diploma. I thought I was going to be a failure the rest of my life.
When Ashton Bennett dropped out of high school, she never thought she'd have a second chance.
But now I realize that there is also another way to get it.
That way is Norfolk's new Magic Johnson Bridgescape Academy, Open Campus for High School Dropouts.
There is a need for open campuses in every city that serves education across the nation. It's for God and population of students and I'm glad that Norfolk is the first open campus in the state of Virginia. Are you ready?
Program Director Don Hester says students take four hours of classes a day and they're earning more than a GED. They're shooting for a high school diploma.
Some that have a desire and want to graduate from their high school and earning a diploma allows them the opportunity to do that.
State funding is covering most of the cost of the program and they're also accepting a handful of middle school students who have fallen behind. Teacher Tony Agadi is proud to be a part of this.
It's a new, fresh approach to helping out people. I mean, that's so nice.
Coming up at 6:00, I'm looking into how school officials hope to expand the number of students here and how you can get involved. In Norfolk, Karen Hopkins, 13 News.
A drop out just opened in Norfolk this week. It's the first school of its kind in Virginia. Karen Hopkins shows us how this breakthrough in education is giving students a second chance.
That's it. Okay, we're ready for questions. John, you want to add anything?
Ready for questions?
Any questions? The news reporter mentioned that people could become involved. What were the suggestions for how they could become involved with that?
He was asking how could, the news media mentioned that people could become involved. We have the Advisory Committee. That is one way. We have a lot of people that have expressed interest. So, that is one way. John?
You know, we're also going to be open to mentors, you know, or other community folks that would want to come in and volunteer. So, I mean, there's, there's lots of different potential opportunities, you know, that, you know, we can include community members, you know, going through our MPS district process in terms of, you know, vetting out, you know, volunteers and mentors.
I'm sorry to say this quickly, but I want to commend you all, first of all, for Governor's Implementation. I want to commend Sam for bringing it to us and the team for pushing ahead with it through some setbacks and some obstacles and certainly want to know as we move forward how the board can support this effort. But I think kudos are in order to the entire team of persons that it has taken, at least to get this off the ground and get it going and we look forward to great success with it. Brad, they want?
How much do we need to open it up for evening sessions?
I'd like to come back with some hard figures on that. John, do you have a?
Well, I think part of it would be we've got to create some stability with what we're starting with now first.
Sure, sure, sure.
You know, we need to build our waiting list a little bit more, you know, to be able to justify the numbers for an evening program. Clearly, the need is there, but we've got to be able to have the supporting numbers to support it from a financial standpoint.
I totally understand that. You want to walk before you can run and get the program up and running. I just want to make sure we're thinking far enough ahead because there are a lot of, the need is there for kids that work to get them back in school. And I want to look at that. And I was wondering if that's part of the Opportunity Inc. grant that you're applying for? Would that money go toward that or towards just the operation of the school itself?
We're going to have to pay for staff in order to run an evening program. And so, our current staff is, you know, they're taxed for hours outside of what they're already working. So, once we, and we'll get with Dr. Thornton and figure out how many students it's going to take to put the qualified staff there to run the program and how we might interchange hours for staff. The Opportunity Inc. grant will be to pay students for employment. And so, students receive that money directly, they don't fund staff.
I understand. Okay.
I have the honor of walking through the first day, visiting with the director and visiting with the teachers. I look forward to five years from now, visiting again. At that time, I hope the testimony will be just as fulfilling as I believe it will be. I look forward to the hopes and dreams that we have heard Monday and today and the next week of the students, of the faculty, of even board members and staff here, the hopes and dreams realized in the form of great stories of success. Five years from now, please know I'm going to walk through again.
I'd add the word redemption to that, too.
Again, I just want to echo, congratulations to the team for great work in making this all happen. It's part of our transformation initiative and it's a reality and I'm just so thrilled to see it happen. But I also want to commend the students and embracing the challenge that we're putting before them. So, I commend those that signed up and are willing to learn and grow. So, they are to be a heralded first graduation class from, I know, the five respective high schools. But you know what? That's a proud graduation that we should very much celebrate and I want to thank them for coming along the journey with us.
I did have one closing thought. That staff, Dr. Birdsong and her staff, Ronnie Myers-Dobbs, are to be commended for not just, and John Coleman, I think, was on that team, for not just selecting teachers to come to that building. If you talk to each one of those teachers, you'll see they have an inherent commitment to make sure these students are successful and it shows. And so, we're really lucky to have a very strong teaching and administrative staff in that building.
In addition, I would say to the Governor's Leadership Team that I think it is important for our role, too, to continue to communicate this opportunity and that it is out there because we can accommodate additional students and as we move forward, as far as space, and of course, as we receive caseloads, then we would have to then move forward with staffing based on caseloads. But communicate to, we're going to do our part, but if you can communicate to various stakeholders in your constituency about the opportunity so that we attract more and more students that have dropped out because we want to get them back on track and get them, get them to a point of being employed as well as even consider going on to the next phase, whether it's college or vocational, technical, or specialized training. So, that process of increasing the numbers is important to me as superintendent and for another reason as well because then it allows us to open up more seats for those middle school students over age for grade as well as those high school students that are behind on credits. So, growing and doing good work around one piece also results in being able to have other opportunities for students and we can sustain that if we keep those students in the seat. So, any way that you can help us communicate that, I would request that you do so as we continue to do it as well.
Okay. Is there an Educational Planning update as well?
Yes.
All right. In reference to continued educational planning, of course, Open Campus is one example of a component of transformation, but Educational Planning update sent us on a review of the fact that we're at the point, this current school year, our plans consist of several things. Number one, bringing back our Steering Committee. You recall that we had a Steering Committee when we did the comprehensive review to bring us to the options for transformation. So, it's time to bring that Steering Committee back together to now take a look at and revisit those things that are designed as ongoing items for this current school year. And so, we look to do that during the first week of October, thereabout, and so those dates are being scheduled. So, stay tuned for that. Number two would be, of course, we have moved forward with reconfiguration with four schools and I would remind you that in our plans for this current year, as it relates to reconfiguration for those four schools, it centers heavily on professional development and professional learning. And remind the board and the Governor's Leadership Team as a whole that at the K-2 level, there's a heavy emphasis on what we refer to as guided reading and the whole process of making those K-2 teachers experts in guided reading and reading readiness so that we do the things that are required to ensure that our children leave second grade, going into third grade, ready to read, and then reading on grade level and above by the end of third grade. So, professional learning scheduled to be ongoing this year for that. Know that for, during the summer, professional learning for the reconfiguration consisted of unpacking the standards. Unpacking the standards in a way that those teachers at the K-2 level were able to hone in on K-2 curricular types of requirements. And at the 3-5 level, unpacking the standards allowed 3-5 teachers to have a laser-like focus on how to unpack the standards as it relate to only those grades. And remember, we talked about the fact that one major difference in this reconfiguration compared to a K-5 school is that it allows you to hone in on those grade levels in a more condensed, precise manner. And so, we started that process of unpacking the standards and training for those levels this summer. And as of this current school year, into the end of the year, we will continue with items such as whole group instruction and training blended with small group instructional training and high-yield strategies for K-2 students and age appropriateness as well as what that means in terms of the differential in reference to age appropriateness for 3-5. Know that 3-5, the focus is on the comprehension piece and comprehension strategies and also on inquiry. So, just wanted to remind us of that whole fact that it is ongoing and that any example of change or reconfiguration that we make will be based on strategies that have been research-based and proven strategies that if you implement with fidelity, then they work. So, it is about the strategies that you implement in the K-2 school and about the strategies that you implement in 3-5, both related to students and both related to principal leadership. So, those things will be ongoing. Item three, you are pretty much up to date in terms of Lafayette Winona. You received the presentation there. We will look forward to giving you a continued update in reference to Lafayette Winona such as the establishment of a committee to enter into further discussions on sequence, time schedules, all of those things that need to happen this current school year so that we will be ready for a repurposed Lafayette Winona or School X, whatever is going to be named as the board makes that decision. And so, we're going to continue to work to lay out that process so, and we'll continue to update the board in reference to that. That is, that, those items really consist of the bulk of what we need to pay attention to this current school year outside of the feeder pattern piece because once we bring the Steering Committee back, we're going to take a look at all of these items to determine quality, to determine challenges, to determine implications around strategies that we want to modify to make them stronger. And remember that the feeder pattern option was one that was on the table and approved for us to go back to look at the feeder patterns from elementary to middle to high to determine if there were implications around needs for change in that regard, whether it was zoning, whether it was socioeconomic diversity, or whether it was creating more of a cohort or longitudinal type movement from elementary to middle to high. So, as far as educational planning, those are the things that will be on tap. And remember, the Steering Committee will be coming back together in early October to begin those conversations. With that, I conclude my remarks in reference to 2.01 Transformation Update. Okay. Questions in comments on that report?
With the reconfiguration, is there any type of benchmarks or indicators that we should be observing that maybe you all will be reporting on periodically that just speaks to some of the things you just mentioned?
Yes. I would suggest that the board should pay close attention to the mechanisms that we are using for professional learning and how we are gauging quality because you could provide the very best professional learning opportunities and expect that they will be implemented back in the schoolhouse, so to speak. But for you, in terms of the ends as it relates to professional development, how are we ensuring quality delivery of services and those expected deliverables that would come from professional learning? And so, Dr. Corbin really keeps a finger on the pulse of the professional learning piece along with the Teaching and Learning Department as a part of that. And so, we're going to have a heavier focus on how we measure the quality and seeing evidence of the rollout for guided reading, for example. Once you train teachers, how are we seeing evidence of it happening in the classroom and what does it mean for us in terms of results? And I would also suggest that we pay close attention to the benchmarking process because at some point, though you don't, you know, you don't necessarily see immediate results in the first round of benchmarking, but to see that as we move through the year that we're seeing progress linked to that. And so, and this becomes like, this becomes a study for us in terms of the successes around it, though it's calculated in terms of that because these strategies are strategies that have been proven to work, but we want to gauge them to make sure that we are implementing at the right level. So, those are the kinds of things I would say the board would need to look for. And when we make reports, for example, during work sessions, teaching and learning will always have a place on the agenda and so at the appropriate time, we'll update on reconfiguration and evidence of how the training has made a difference in the classroom, so.
I guess when kindergarten, first and second graders complete their first phase of going through the K-2 process, it would be good to know what the third grade teachers think to get their input to say, you know, if they think that they're coming in and they've seen a great difference or if there are other things that they think that those teachers can hone in on, so.
Yeah. We feel like over time, we definitely see that. We think that we will see some quick wins this year, but you're going to have current second graders who will have spent one year
Right.
in this setting that will move on to second grade, I mean, that will move on to third grade. And so, you know, I think that there are some examples of quick wins that we can secure this first year, but most definitely as you look, as we look at, for example, the kindergarten and the first graders that are in place now
Right.
and have an opportunity to spend two or three years immersed in the delivery of such strategies, we ought to see a better-prepared student leaving the second grade, going into third grade and ready to read. So, yes, you're right.
Okay. Thank you. We're moving on to item 2.02, Five Year Strategic Plan Review. We'll get an update on those SMART goals with emphasis on year-two action plans. Dr. King?
Chairman Houston, members of the board. Five Year Strategic Plan Update will consist of Planning, Strategic Planning Committee Outcomes as well as the SMART goals. As you alluded to earlier, you should have received, I believe, some documents for year-two action plans that were reviewed by the planning team here recently as of September 23rd. And of course, I had an opportunity to attend that particular session as well. In addition, you should have received a 2014-15 work plan and goals as a result of some of the analyses that we do from an ongoing standpoint to determine what that work plan should consist of. With that said, Dr. Savigny, I'll defer to you for any additional comments around the structure and intent of what was provided.
Okay. I emailed these particular documents to you on, one was on Friday night and the other was on Sunday. And then, we are now in the process of taking this information off of this template and putting it into Board Docs. We, Kathy Lewis and Janelle began looking at that information and we're in the process of uploading the year-two plans and categorizing those because we determined today, after a trial and error conversation, that we wanted to make sure that the year-one plans stayed, but we have to find a new way with the current structure to highlight the year-two plans. So, we're looking at some color coding or some symboling, but that will all be into Board Docs within the next couple of days. So, we're simply taking the information from these templates and putting them onto the individual templates that currently reside within each action plan that lives inside Board Docs. Did you have any questions about this particular format? Because we tried to make sure that we had a behavioral objective or the goal that we were trying to achieve for each particular plan in regard to the measurement that we were looking at or the baseline and the target and then the person who is ultimately responsible for the implementation of that particular plan. I know a couple of you emailed me questions that we kind of corresponded with via email in regard to particular components, but we wondered if you had any other questions in regard to the plans before they were launched.
A question and comment. Start with a comment first. This is very good. It's comprehensive, it's easy to follow, and I greatly appreciate the work that you and the team have put together to have very specific goals and targets established for us to follow along with. So, thank you for that. The question is, perhaps at the end of this year, would it be possible to get Uh, the question is, um, perhaps at the end of this year, uh, would it be possible to get a, uh, you know, I like to talk about surveys, um, survey from the teachers, perhaps asking them a, a single question on each new plan that was rolled out for this year. For example, there's a, a pre-K plan, there's, um, plans on the CFAs, there's plans on, uh, pre-K roundup. So just a single question on those plans to s- to see, uh, how teachers are feeling about, about them. And, um, I think that will get them involved, which I know they're already involved, and could get some great feedback, uh, from that. So.
Okay. Thank you. Great suggestion.
I'll, I'll add to, to your point, uh, Dr. Gabriel, that, uh, as we speak, individual schools are now going through, uh, training incrementally to be able to build their, what I refer to as site-based plans. And they're utilizing the, uh, same format process, which means that they are bringing in their community teams, uh, to do the same thing that we, uh, worked to do, uh, to begin back in twelve thirteen. And so that means that, um, schools are, are speaking to their community beliefs for their schools and their mission, vision, and ultimately it will result in strategies so that all of the things that are being done in the school can be, uh, captured in one plan and one document. But we're at the training, planning stage of that. And so that too will, uh, provide at some point indicators around feedback from schools and teachers about that process and how they feel, because I, I only mention that because this particular plan is really the overarching organizational plan. And while teachers can feel the effects of it, because it, for example, if we were rolling out professional learning, of course, they can really speak to how they felt about the professional learning piece, but it was, it was based on the, the aggregate analysis to determine that that needed to happen. When they develop individual site-based plans, it, it's real-time info about their community, their particular school, and the strategies that they're building is necessary to move their schools forward. So, um, I was, I would suggest to the board to remember that, because, um, that's another piece that requires training. And, um, teachers will be involved in that and the cross-section of people will, will be involved in that. And I'm sure you were going to mention this, but Oc- October ninth, I believe, or tenth, um, there would be the, uh, yearly update opportunity for the planning team. Uh, the forty-member team thereabout will come back together. The purpose of that for the board is for them to take a look at the community beliefs, take a look at the mission statement, take a look at the parameters, the objectives, and the five strategies to revisit those to see if there's, there are things that they feel like we want to suggest that we tweak, modify, adjust, any of those things. That's the work of that team. And we've got, they have, we have two members of the board that serve on that team. That's Mr. Jordan and Dr. Stewart. And so, um, while they will enter into that, uh, uh, process, once, uh, their suggestion and their work is done, it may have, uh, implications for, um, what action teams might do around the review, because they will be reviewing the action plans as well, and they suggest that certain action plans will go to, back to action teams for review. So it's a pretty involved process, more streamlined than, than initially, because we now have a package of beliefs, mission, and all those things created. Initially, we didn't have that. That planning team had to develop all those things. While it already exists, now it's a matter of revisiting it to ensure that it is still real-time and that it does relate to, um, our relevant pertinent, uh, statistics and, and, and data. So I think that that's going to be a, a significant undertaking, uh, to, to ensure that we are, uh, keeping a finger on the pulse of what needs to be changed, tweaked, or modified as it relates to, uh, action plans and that whole package. Once that happens and is complete, at some point over X amount of time, that comes back to the board. Again, for the board to take a look at the, the body of work that that action team has done, and also the, you know, the action plans will be present, and then the board, board gives its blessing or questions to it, uh, around it. And, uh, so this is just a snapshot of what is to come. Any additional comments?
I ju- I just wanted to say that the location of that particular training and, um, some facilitative components of that were finalized yesterday afternoon. Uh, so it was shared with planning members who were at the event with us on the twenty-third, and it will now go out in writing to those individuals this afternoon, because all the logistics associated around that have been confirmed as of last night. So.
Now, how will you work with the, uh, schools to make sure that the, uh, school-based or site-based plans, um, are really congruent with the overall strategic plan, kind of have, share the same DNA? It's not a, while certainly I'm sure we're focused on the various needs of that school, uh, I would imagine it would be important that, um, there's some, some, some connection and, and not overlap, uh, of, uh, of the work.
Each of the building facilitators went through a two-and-a-half-day training so that they were very comfortable and familiar with the process so that they could replicate in their buildings. So all but six of our schools, as of yesterday, have completed that process so they have their beliefs, their mission statement, their parameters, their objectives, and their strategies. The others are, um, in the varying stages of having that completed. Once those are, uh, completed, those will be turned in to the district so that the district can review those, just to make sure that there is that alignment. The district plan, as Dr. King referenced earlier, is the overarching umbrella, and the school plans should be and will be unique to each of the schools, but they need to nestle inside of that umbrella so that there is that support between the two plans. So the school teams create those with the microcosms of their respective communities and then submit those to the district team, just as another quality assurance check to make sure that that is there, and then those will be published um, so that the stakeholders of the respective school communities can, uh, embrace those in a public vehicle.
So that is, that is one of the major roles that the internal facilitator will play at the school, though. So, because each school would have a trained internal facilitator to, to ensure that the steps are followed and to do some of the things that Dr. Savigny suggested.
And then, once the facilitators have completed that initial blueprint, then we're also going back and training each of the action team leaders. So each building will have one action team leader per strategy, and as of Friday afternoon, we had, or as of Saturday morning, we had trained a hundred and thirteen of those individuals. So we will continue working with schools to train the rest of their action plan team leaders so that we can make sure that the process of the action plan development is adhered to as we move forward with this.
The good news is, I think priorities are very communicable to the community to rally everyone together. The implementation strategies that I've termed, hundreds of them, or ninety-nine point nine percent of them are things that I wholeheartedly support as an educator, and this is a citizen of Norfolk. But, two years ago, I identified twenty-four items, two of which are substantive items, the remainder of which are presentation styles that I would love the opportunity to speak to. And unfortunately, I will not return until the eleventh of October. Uh, your designee could, any designee could communicate to me. I could be very specific. I was specific two years ago. I was specific last year. They haven't changed since that time. And my worry would be that if they reach the community in a document, that they could provide confusion or, or lack of clarity. Uh, again, this is not a huge thing. Two are substantive, the remainder are not. But I'm dedicated for continuous improvement, and I want to do everything I can to improve this to my opinion's best quality. So unfortunately, I'll be gone to the eleventh of October, uh, but, uh, really would love the opportunity to, to speak to your designee to make sure that these items are seen. And, and again, I predict that if they go out in their current form, that they will create confusion or lack of clarity. The two substantive items are even more important than that. Again, the priorities are wonderful. Most of the implementation strategies, in my opinion, are things that I've agreed with for decades, uh, but I would like the opportunity to make my contribution.
Sure. Understood. And I would request that we just set a schedule of time to meet, and, uh, we'll, we'll.
Probably needs to be after the eleventh.
After, okay.
Yeah.
Well, we're, we're getting with you to determine your schedule.
Thank you.
Okay.
I know the strategic plan sits in the hands of the strategic plan planners, and I'm, and I'm behind it. I just have one small suggestion to make. As it, as I looked at the goals, especially for the parent university, try to expand it, I would like us to consider looking at expanding parent university to each school. Have a parent university in each school to provide better access. We need to help parents be better parents. We need to, um, have greater opportunities. If we only have it twice a year at one, at one site, that limits the ability to do that. I know it costs money and time, but I think, uh, that, if that was a, a part of the individual school's strategic plan, that might be a good idea.
Thank you.
Just one suggestion too.
Demand.
We all are well versed in the strategic plan, since having lived it and breathed it now for two years. And I think it's important for our community to understand it as well. And I know on our website here that we have the full plan, then we have year one, and then we have year two. So now that we have these documents, I think it'd be helpful to make these transparent here and replace what's there so that we have what's current, based on what's just been recently all designed on the site so that the community has the ability to understand where we are right now. And I think to put the performance indicators and the baseline data and all that person responsible, I think is wonderful. You know, the greater the information, the better. So I would just encourage to kind of have a cleanup here on the site so that we can better inform our community as to where we are.
If you can make that happen. Thank you.
Yeah, and I also, I was actually looking at the same thing. With the, the year one, phase one work, where, what's the best place to go to see how we perform from year one? And then being able to understand how it, in many instances, formed baselines where it was appropriate for, for year two? I know you all try to do all this stuff in, in the, in the board docs, but in an interim, is there a, a report or something that, that could be, that's available where you can really follow what was, what we finished up in year one and how it, uh, impacts what we're saying we're going to do for, for year two, phase one? This is huge.
Year one, we kept on that mammoth spreadsheet
Right.
and, and tracked the progress through each quarter. So we can certainly, um, provide for you again that year one spreadsheet, and that's kind of where that lives right now, because all the year one plans are in that document. Um, and we are moving forward with putting the, the year two information into board docs as quickly as we can.
And, and then, uh, piggybacking a bit on, uh, a couple of things I know that, that Dr. Stewart has concerns about. In the year two action plans, there were a couple of locations where you indicated that there may be some policy implications.
Yes.
Can you describe, as a board, how we should look at those areas that you said may have policy implications and what we should be doing with that?
And what we will need to do with that internally is look at our current practice in regard to, uh, transfers, because it was the will of the district team that those particular indicators list, teachers remain in those buildings for two years versus one year. And we put that there because it was our understanding at this point that our policies reflect annual assignments. So that was there for us, that as we move forward with that, we will have to come back with our HR team and look at that particular policy to see if we do need to make a change to the policy. That was there as a reminder for us.
And then, guys. I think an added piece to that there would be, once that happens, then that information should come to the, the board's committee for its review and discussion, then to determine whether it moves forward or not. You know, if it does, then once you all review it and you vet it out and moves forward for cabinet discussion, and then, uh, then it's authorized to come to this setting for further discussion and recommendation for change or adoption for my board. So, that's what I think.
And the last question I had, to talk about a little bit, you know, is the board training that we did recently. Can you just describe the process from the activity and event that's going to be held in October? The, your ear and wrap up, whatever the appropriate termination, terminology you all use, how you go from what will happen there to, you know, the board's role? Does the board then come and also reaffirm, or if there are recommended changes in any parameters or beliefs or anything like that, that the board wanted to recommend? What's the, what's the process? Can you just describe the process for that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, of course, the team will do its work. All of the review that we talked about, the beliefs, everything, that whole, whole, uh, core of, of the work, as well as, um, have the opportunities to review the action plans. And those action plans that are linked to strategies, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And so, um, I would, uh, anticipate that the planning team would, as they review actual plans, may suggest, uh, some modifications to certain plans maybe, or some tweaks to certain plans. And when that happens typically, it goes back to the action team to take a look at what that planning team has said. So once those things happen, the action team does its work, then it'll, it'll, we'll have the opportunity to bring it back to the planning team for the planning team to embrace and agree with or bless it. Then, once that's complete, it comes to the board. The board then has the authority to, because you have to, we, 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 the expectation of the process is that the board, once we reach that point, will adopt or have further, further dialogue around certain items in the plan. Of course, the thing that you all have heard me mention is that, at that point, the board doesn't, doesn't rewrite an, an action plan, but they raise some questions around action plans, because action plans are means for me, for reaching a certain end. And so the board then will pay close attention to those desired results as well, and any other changes that are there, and ask those questions, and to give direction to me as a representative or leader of the administration in terms of what you'd like to see. When that happens, then we make the steps based on what you see at that point. And that's the full board.
What's, so like specifically to, if we have the meeting on the tenth, what we expect then at a November or December work session? That there'll be something that will come back to the board to, to do that? That, that's what I'm just trying to get a feel of.
I believe that will. I, if we turn it around in that short period of time, that'd be fine. I don't know if.
If there are changes made, or recommendations, or changes that come forth from the district team, then I, if I heard you correctly, you wanted to know when those would potentially come back to the school board, correct?
Part of the discussion that's been going on with the board is, you know, still the board's role of, um, impacting, uh, some of the things that are there, right, based upon, you know, changes or new things that are coming up. So just trying to get a feel for that, for that process so that we know, you know, what we do, when we do it, and how we do it. Because I think when we went through the first time, you know, it was all new to us. But I think now, the second year, I'm hearing that there may be some interest, especially where it's impacting policy. And so it needs to be some way for us to either, you know, whether the process calls for us to communicate, you know, back to you, back to the planning team, whatever that process is, I think we need to really get a handle on it, because soon, you know, the first quarter will be up, and we'll still be dealing with some of these same, same challenges. So maybe I have an answer now, but I just think it's something that I'm bringing to you because I've heard it.
All right. So considering the fact that this meeting will be, will convene, will begin, uh, early October, turn around time to get, uh, to the point of bringing that package back to the board. You, I think I heard you say you anticipate that being during the next work session?
It, I would like to think, uh, that the changes would not be of such a magnitude that it will require magnificent change, but I'm not going to know that until we actually have the. the opportunity to work with the team on the 10th. So at this point, if the changes are minimal, then yes, we could be ready to go at the November work session. But if they evolve into something that spans beyond minimal, then it, it may be later. But we're not really going to know that until we after, until after the session on the 10th.
Just ask a question. I just want to make sure, I understand the process from the planning team.
Right.
What I'm saying is, I think there are questions and concerns that the board may have.
Sure.
And we need to know what the process is for the board to communicate into the, into the process. That's the piece that, that I think we need to get some thought to.
Okay.
I see this strategic planning process as a process and a living document, similar to our US Constitution, that has opportunities to improve it as we go along. To that regard, Mr. Jordan has kindly mentioned the two substantive items related to policy. But to the dates that we're talking about, we have a discussion today on the milestones. These are items that this planning team may not have had information about or access to or interest in, because some of those items go back six years. So that conversation will not conclude today. We will need some time in November. Hopefully, it could conclude then. And I would believe that some of the items could enhance the Strategic Planning Transformation Initiative, because some of them are about the very issues about which you spoke when you came to us, and about which this school board, absent the current members, six years ago, were talking about. So I see this as a living document, but I wouldn't want to conclude things too fast without that discussion concluding. And once again, to restate, most of the 24 items that I have are representation items that I don't want to be represented to the community until they're as perfect as they can be. And the two items that Mr. Jordan, that I had cornered over the weekend, and so he knows those two items, so he can represent, but the priorities and, I see it as a living document. But I think milestones might have something tucked away in there that may need to be added, not necessarily changed, but added.
Sure.
Okay.
Any other questions in the comments? Moving on to item 2.03, teaching and learning.
Chair Houston, members of the board, teaching and learning. It consists of assessment update relating to common formative assessments, and the importance of ongoing validity and reliability, so that we are able to make real-time analyses, and then make informed decisions about what we do as a result of that analysis. So with that said, I am turning it over to Dr. Bailey.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Dr. Houston, Dr. King, and members of the board. I have with me today a member of my staff, Dave Howe, whose primary work supports our local assessments. And as we have begun the school year, I would like to mention that we have numerous assessments that will be administered throughout the school year for various purposes. Simple and short, our district assessments are designed to provide diagnostic information about student learning of the standards. As assessment is integrated with instruction, it supports monitoring of student progress towards meeting instructional goals, as well as providing useful feedback for tiered lessons to help remediate and accelerate student learning. Oops, don't want to go backwards. Here we have a brief history of the district benchmark assessments. It starts during the school year 2000, 2001, and we have indicated several other years where changes took place, such as moving from paper pencil tests to online testing, as well as adding in technology-enhanced items. Over the last five years, we have conducted two surveys of our teachers to provide us feedback, as well as, most recently, we spoke with elementary principals, as well as our cabinet, to provide information that guided our assessment schedule for this year. Sorry, keep going back. To use our district-level assessments, it serves two different purposes. The original intent was to use these assessments to inform and focus instruction for the classroom teacher. Now, we are also using it as an accountability measure, as, as part of the implementation of the state and federal accountability systems. And so it also is used as a predictor of SOL performance. The cycle of the process involves aligning the curriculum to state standards, which is used to guide the development, the pacing guide, then aligning the test to what has been taught. One of the focus areas of the academic review process involve the evaluation of the alignment of the curriculum, and it resulted in that we had a solid alignment. Excuse me. The terms commonly associated with assessments are validity, valid, and reliability, reliable. The psychometricians that are employed by Pearson and NWEA develop and create these assessment items that we then purchase from them and make it a part of our assessments that we then provide to our classroom teachers. We have a portion of our item banks that we have opened up to our teachers to use to make their own assessments, so that they would not have to worry about the psychometric properties. Reliability determines how consistently a measure of skill or knowledge yields similar results under varying conditions, and validity is defined as the degree to which instrument measures what it's supposed to measure. There are numerous terms that are associated with assessments and psychometric properties that also includes validity and reliability. And I would like for Dave, at this time, to share a little bit of some of the analysis that we have performed over the years.
One of the first things we do is we regress, we use regression analysis to compare how the benchmarks perform against the SOLs at the end of the year. For those of you who are familiar with regression, one of the key variables is the adjusted R squared, which tells you the correlation between the assessment you gave and then the end result, which would be like the SOL. Most of our benchmarks have fallen between a .5 up to a .8. And anything above a .5 is considered pretty good. A .8, you're getting into almost high-stakes testing level of correlation. Most of them did fall between the .5 to .7, but we did have some that would go north of 7, almost to 8. We did analysis with the, Rousch modeling, thank you. Rousch modeling, which would actually compare the items' validity themselves. The concept is, with Rousch modeling, you're not looking at how an assessment did, but how each item performed on that test. And we would analyze each, we would sit down with senior coordinators and analyze how items were performing on each benchmark. And that way, if we did find an item that we didn't think was performing for our population, it was not reused. So we did use the Rousch modeling as well.
Thank you. So our current practice involves a pre- and post-assessment, as well as common formative assessment integrated throughout the school year. And what's listed here are how, why, how assessments are used, and certainly to differentiate instruction. Our current support is presented here on this slide. We have assessment research and accountability and curriculum instruction that play a major role in the process. Having a local assessment staff is considered a best practice in providing strategic choice and use of resources to improve student achievement. Fundamental premise is that we can do anything, but we can't do everything. While we're providing support to all stakeholders, we do have some gaps within the Department of Ara and Curriculum and Instruction, and we're trying to address those gaps as we speak. I added this particular slide to give you just a brief overview of our assessment schedule, of our local assessments. And based on feedback from our elementary principals, they have asked for a monthly assessment. And so that's what we have tried to provide for them. And then also, you can see where the administration of the SOL assessments would take place. We have our SOL targets, which Dr. Savigny shared with you already, and we just wanted to share it with you again, that ultimately, this is the direction that we're trying to go in, and that our local assessments will help to inform us on our progress to that. At this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Savigny for concluding comments.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey and Dave, very much. I just wanted to remind the school board that we're in the pre-testing cycle right now, and it is our plan, as of this moment, to provide you with the update for the pre-testing at our next work session, so that we can have the very real-time data that's been gleaned from this first round of pre-assessments. So that is our goal, to share that with you at the November work session. We are encouraged by what our internal analysis is telling us in regard to the validity and the reliability of our particular assessments. And I would ask, Dave, if you could just share for just a moment, some of the initial study that you did in regard to the math analysis at Tidewater Park Elementary School, please?
I was asked, we had significant gains at Tidewater Park in math, fifth grade. And so I compared the expectations, if you looked at their CFAs from last year, and what would have projected their SOL scores based off how the district model looked. And it lined up really, really close with their actual outcomes. So if, if we would have looked at their CFAs before the SOLs, knowing what the district did on the SOLs as a whole, we would have been able to see that that growth was coming. So it should have been expected.
So we are excited about the direction that we're all moving in collaboratively. It is very much a collaborative relationship between the assessment department as a component of teaching and learning, because our curriculum coordinators under the direction of Dr. Corbin worked very closely with Dr. Bailey and Dave and the entire team in the Assessment Research and Accountability Office. And we feel like we're moving in the right direction. You know, this is year two of this particular model, with the pre-test and the post-test, and the interim benchmark, so we're comfortable and confident with where we are, and look forward to sharing continued statistical analyses, as we have a deeper bank of analyses to fall back on in terms of actual student data.
Very briefly, I just wanted to pinpoint the notion of the study that the team did as a sample with the research around Tidewater Park Elementary and the growth is key, because of the validity and reliability piece around common formative assessments, because we, we place a lot of eggs in the basket, that whole approach. And that's what gives real life to safety nets and enrichment, because we want to know that if we're making decisions based on what those analyses are telling us, that those decisions are going to turn into and mean improved student performance. And so that's why that study is important, and I'm looking forward to understand that as well, because, you know, as we do the work and as we get better and better with it, then it has implications for having more of a tighter customized safety net approach for students, in a way that it should mean raising the performance to an exponent, and accelerating the learning, which is what we know we have to do. While we see, while we're beginning to see some incremental growth, we've got to accelerate that. In order to do so, we've got to know as much as possible about how much learning took place across each child, the element of the standard, and then go back to do what the reteaching or double dip or extended block, or whatever that safety net might be. At the same time, we need to be able to pinpoint those students who are on target and beginning to exceed the target, and, and provide the enrichment that's necessary to allow them to stretch as well. So that's why the validity and reliability piece, and the approach that psychometricists would use in this whole notion is very, all that's very important.
Greg? I guess Sam answered half of my question, because, first of all, Tidewater Park Elementary School is definitely a bright spot, that those tests, and it's great to hear that the psychometrics could predict that. And as we find those bright spots, and being able to replicate them in other environments is absolutely critical to our success, so using the best practices. I applaud you and bring you back to psychological testing 301.
This is an editorial comment. It's by me and doesn't represent the thinking of the board, but I question validity, and that's not your problem. You're trying to help us. Page five, current practices with what we're using these tests for. Wonderful. Forty years ago, as a teacher in this city, I helped develop the first tests that have morphed into this rebranding of the terminology, SOLs. There's a lot in that statement. Forty years ago, it was called BLS. Forty years ago, we created test items to try and be helpful to accomplish page five. Thirty years ago, at the Department of Education, I was part of refining this process. Somewhere along the line, the state leadership of Virginia and other states has gone from being big helper, to big brother, to big bully. The sadness that I have is that all the good news about Tidewater Park and its progression and the use of test scores to help students learn in order to become good community contributors is being lost in the finger-pointing and the blame game, and that's been said to me over the past 40 years. I may not have many more opportunities to say this, but going from big help, as I was, I believe, to big brother, as I had to, to now big bully is disheartening to me. I hope that we can back off a bit, I hope that we can use page five, and I question the validity. And most folks that have retired from my profession question the validity of what we're doing. But, having said that, we've got to continue to do it to help these students learn, to get better, to prepare for, to be contributors. I just regret the devolution that has occurred. Thanks for indulging this individual response, not a board response. Thanks for all you did.
So I understand, you're talking about the validity, high-stakes testing, period? Or the validity of assessments as related to that?
No, in particular, and in particular, the wisdom of the current leadership of Virginia, it means the political leadership, has saw, seen the wisdom of changing some of the emphasis on some of the testing. Being a former state coordinator for social studies, we always thought testing, the validity of testing third-grade students on those items was just ridiculous. We're talking about people that have been around for decades. So the validity of individual tests is questioned, but testing itself can be useful, as long as we don't use it for the wrong thing. We're not using it for that, political leaders are. Thanks, apologize for diverting.
It's okay.
But somebody's got to say it, and I'm glad I did.
Thank you. Noel?
I'll ditto Dr. Stewart's comments. But my question revolves around our budget, because we're going to be beginning the process of planning our budget, and I know, Dr. Bailey, you have a small staff that you work with, and we are going to be looking at a lot of data that comes to us from the K2 development, with three through five. As United for Children expands, we're going to be looking at the data from those students. So if there are needs that your department has to help you with this process, because as Dr. King mentioned, it all goes back to eventually safety nets and what we can do to help students learn directly in the classroom, please let us know, so that we can accommodate you in the budget, because this is very important and helpful, especially knowing that the data from the CFAs are correlating well with the SOLs.
Okay.
Go ahead. You always end, I show much. So this question might sound a bit esoteric, but tricky, and I don't know that it's answerable, maybe it is, but I completely agree and understand your comments about we're having to accelerate the pace of learning, in order to really get to the point where we need to be. Have you put a data point or a pace on that acceleration? Do you know how fast that acceleration needs to be, and will you know when you've gotten to that point in order to demonstrate the future outcome?
But I know when I've reached my goal.
Well, I know, we'll know when we reach the goal.
But.
But you talk about the acceleration.
Sure.
Is it 10 miles an hour at a time? Is it 20 miles an hour? I mean, how are you measuring the acceleration pace?
Well, as we speak, each school now is required to, take a look at each subject area, what the baseline is, much like what we have done as a board from a system standpoint. And so they should know where they are across accountable subject areas. And then also disaggregate that information in terms of those subgroups to realize that in the area of mathematics, my economically disadvantaged students perform. in the area of mathematics, my economically disadvantaged students perform that this particular level, SWD, this particular level, LEP, all of your ethnic subgroups, and then in the aggregate, in math, we performed here. So that creates their baseline. They are also working collaboratively with the executive directors to develop their targets based on what those baselines are for this year. So this year, each school will have that. And so I could, I could speak in more definitive terms to that, once that's complete, because early October, mid-October, those documents should be developed in the discussion that we've had, centered on the fact that those targets ought to be, should be stretched targets with strategies tied to them. In other words, how much growth can we commit to considering the baseline and what we have in place? If you take a look at Tidewater Park and its growth, I think math, for example, was about twenty points, was about a twenty point increase. So can a school grow it by double digits? Yes. If that team commits to growing by double digits, and we're going to kind of gate some of that, because we don't need to move slowly, we need to accelerate. But in order to do that, you don't want to rush it without the strategies that are necessary to allow acceleration. So again, at some point, probably in October, I'll be able to speak to what those targets look like, as I lump all of elementary together with those targets in middle, in high school, to say, here's what we anticipate, or here's what we are striving to see happen as far as growth this current school year. Everybody wants to meet that absolute of the state's benchmark. It's a given. Math being seventy percent and other areas being seventy-five percent, et cetera. And so, but we're all over the place in terms of individual school in reference to where they are. Some may be at forty percent, some may be at sixty-five. So they're, they're looking at those targets and determining, you know, what they're going to do based on that, because some, some also reflect, this reflects in the apples to oranges comparison, too. So while you might have been at forty percent previous year, now you have a new grade moving, new students moving into a particular grade level, and that's a new body of students. So it's not a, it's not a cohort comparison.
Right.
Not a longitudinal comparison.
Right.
So it makes it a bit difficult to do, but we still have to compare those apples to oranges and keep that in mind when we do targets. And so that's what we're speaking to principals around.
Okay.
That's a long answer, long response to your question, but I wanted to put it in proper perspective in terms of how I can settle on the amount of growth we anticipate this year.
Okay, that's great. Thanks.
Can I make a quick comment? You hit the nail right on the head. That's the problem with the SOLs, because it's not a cohort study.
Right.
It goes grade level to grade level. You're comparing two different groups of kids. That's why the whole idea of grading schools on SOLs is ludicrous. You need to find a different way to, to effectively rate how a school is doing.
Sorry, I hope I didn't.
No, no, you're fine. I'm going to admit to being the student who doesn't understand. So I just want y'all to kind of break down for me, you know, I understand the words, validity, reliability, and all of that. And can you just break it down for me just a little bit? What are you, what are you saying that you learned from what we did last year and the testing that we did last year and what it indicated to you was likely to occur last year? And then adjustments that we're making this year and what the expectations should be? Because when you all mentioned Tidewater Park, what it said to me was, is that you felt that you went back and did some analysis, and what you were seeing with Tidewater Park's assess, performance on assessments was a good indicator of what we would have, what we should have expected for the end of the year. So does that mean then, if we could go back and look at all of the assessments and we should have been able to predict what the outcomes would have been across the district? Or, I mean, just?
Well, sort of. What you, with, what we did, because we were looking at a limited sample, I could look, I had a big, I had the district data. And what I did is I used the district data to say, this is what happened. This was the autopsy. And then within a subset of that data, which was what Tidewater Park was, did their story tell the same story the district did? And the answer was yes, it did, which meant that if we would have known what was going to happen, we could have told Tidewater Park that was going to happen. To answer where you're going with that is what we can do going forward, which was what we have done in years past, is now we can say, okay, according to what we did last year, reaching these thresholds will get you where we want you to be at the end of the year, knowing that that's just an estimate based off how we did in previous years. Yes, we do, we are able to gain data going forward, but we just have to remember that it's, it's projecting off of what happened, off of a different assessment. So it's, it's a good target with no guarantee that that's what's going to be success.
So when you were doing that, did you find any cases where it was just completely out of whack, where we thought we were going to get something?
No, I, I, I did seven schools.
Okay.
Just to make sure that all, because I didn't want it to be just a situation where that one worked out. I wanted to make sure that many schools were working out. And the seven schools that I selected, all of them turned out to be pretty close to what the district did. I picked schools that were socially economically challenged, schools that were high economically, and then schools somewhere in the middle. I tried to pick two or three from each range, just to kind of make sure the district as a whole was represented, and all of them looked pretty good.
So the bottom line is, is then as we get these quarterly updates moving forward, we're anticipating it's going to give us a realistic snapshot of exactly where our students are, based upon the assessments that we're giving and what we're expecting to see when they eventually get to the standards towards the end of the year. Is that correct?
And. The reason, the reason that that's important centers on the fact that, based on those results and the analyses, each time we do it, then we must expect and require action to be taken based on the analysis. So it tells me, as superintendent, that if we make decisions based on what those formatives are telling us, link to those deficiencies, then it is going to move us in the right direction, because you want to know that your benchmarks are informing your decisions. So that study and that type of information moves us closer to the tight realization that if those results say to us that we had students that were deficient in certain, around certain elements of the domain, then that safety net process needs to be customized to the particular child, to the individual student. And the reteaching around that particular element of the domain needs to be specific to what that benchmark said. And so then if we do that, and the student masters and, and is able to, to clear that particular benchmark, that particular deficient area after the safety net, then we're moving forward. So if we're good with how we implement safety nets, it should mean the improved performance on the summative assessment, which means that the question is, how effective are we being at the building level with utilizing these analyses to make the real time decisions to link to what those children need? That's the thing.
And that was going to be my next and final question, the real time piece. So you all did this analysis at the central office level. So what is it that we provide at the building level that allows the assessment analysis to go on more, more real time? Do we just provide support? Is this what, when you all are talking about professional development, is this what the teachers and principals are getting trained in? Or is it a process where, going back to Dr. Gabriel's question, where there's additional support needed at the central level in order to get that information out?
I feel like it's a combination. We are training the school level to do what we are discussing. At the central level, we're also supporting the analysis, but we do have the school net intervention piece, the school net platform is designed to develop reports. So once you input the data, it is, it should provide the report in the format that you need. So in other words, when we, when we conduct an assessment, a CFA, and we input that data through school net, we ought to be able to get a report on each school, broken out by subject area, down to the individual student, and then even linked to the element of the domain where they didn't do well. So having that type of report informs the instruction at the school level. What we want to do, and I know Dr. Bailey's going to want to jump in on this for, in a few minutes, because that's, what we're speaking of now is some dialogue that I have had with school net, which is now Pearson, in that I want them to know our schedule in terms of when we give benchmarks. I want them to be prepared to assist when it's time to input that data, and I want them to be prepared to ensure that we're going to get those real time reports that can be provided and accessed at the school level, then the school may be required to do the query to run the report. But every school ought to have access to being able to run that report. When they run that report, you know, it shouldn't have to be manual. We have to input the data, you run the report by subject, it could, it will tell you each child who didn't master, and it'll tell you the element of the standard around which they didn't master. And then in many cases, color coded by red, green, yellow, so that you can create your case loads and so that you can customize. That's, that's, that's what this school net approach is designed to do. And at the central level, with cabinet, the same thing, except I'm looking at the aggregate at the elementary level and middle and high school. So we're running the same reports, but I want to have standard reports that we're going to get from Pearson slash school net each time we do these benchmarks, and that's what we're working to have happen. You want to come in on that?
I wanted to add maybe a couple of things. As we go throughout the year, we have broken up what we are assessing of the SOL objectives. So, you know, certainly the SOLs in itself takes into account numerous objectives covered. Okay, so when we have our monthly assessments, it's based on what has been taught within that time period. Yeah. So, and then that gives us a feel for how students have mastered those objectives. And yes, this process is a part of the cycle of results. And in working with our schools, our instructional technology staff works very closely with schools, and we have standardized some reports, such as item statistics, that we have pushed down to the school level and have provided professional development on the interpretation of that. A portion of our teachers have already been exposed to that with our prior work using the application D two S C. So we're improving upon what we're doing, because we have a lot of new teachers as well, to help them to embrace the process and become more proficient in the use of them. And so, yes, a work in progress.
Isn't it, it's my understanding that with turnaround schools and things like that, that's, that's the role of professional learning community, isn't it? The P L C, where they look at the data, they look at the students, and then create the safety nets and enrichment, designed to, to either catch the kids up on cancer education.
That is some of the work that's done at P L Cs. That's what P L C is designed to do as well.
That's how it's, how that data is taken down to the school level.
And to, and to, and to use artifacts and evidence of student work to compare various pieces in terms of where they started and how they grew. So when you have common planning, then they have an opportunity to do that.
Thank you very much. Good information and good discussion.
Thank you.
Let me also appreciate the high level overview and the information that you have submitted to us, really giving a good, good time for Q and A and comments. Thank you all very much. Item two point oh four, school leadership development. Dr. King?
Item two point oh four, school leadership development, will consist of discussion of focused priority, schools on C I C funds, and that connection to school improvement and turnaround department. And so with that, I will refer to Dr. Wilford and Dr. Halloran.
Good afternoon, Dr. Houston, Dr. King, members of the board. This afternoon, we want to take this opportunity to give you an update on school improvement grant funding. We're going to focus, or we want to remind the board that the school improvement grants are for priority schools only. Those grants are developed and centered around support for the V D O E seven turnaround principles, support with the schools implementing their school improvement plans, and they are given on various funding cycles, but yearly funding cycles. We also, also should note that there are assurances that the school improvement grants are attached to for, for each school, and that we must assure that we are meeting in order to receive the, the grant funding. And so I did not, while I did not include in your, your documents for today, the turnaround principles, I have done that in previous presentations, and if you need to be reminded of those, we can get that to you, as well as a copy of the assurances that we must follow in being able to, to receive the improvement grants. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Halloran, our senior coordinator for school improvement, who will get more in depth into the charts that you received documenting the funding allocations for the previous year and where we are for the upcoming year.
Thank you, Dr. Wilford. The next few slides will, we'll share with you funding. If you take a look at the two thousand thirteen fourteen school year, it'll tell you for each cohort group of schools, the funding they received this past school year, and then you'll see two thousand fourteen fifteen, which is what we requested. And why you see requested in parentheses is because that's the amount that was noted on the continuation application for this school year. So we're currently waiting to receive feedback from the State Department for all of the cohort groups to see if what we requested, if we will receive it. What I would like to do first is go across the different categories, just so you can just kind of understand what funding supports each of the categories. Object code one thousand, support pretty much personnel services, part-time teachers, support there. Object code two thousand supports fringes or benefits. Object code three thousand, primarily contract services. Four thousand, internal services such as transportation or extended learning opportunities. Object code five thousand, indirect cost and professional development opportunities. Object code six thousand supports the purchase of instructional resources and materials. And then eight thousand, which pretty much supports technology and equipment. So with that being said, if we could just take a look at each slide and groups of schools and each cohort, and just to see if you have any questions as we go along. Cohort one is Lake Taylor Middle. Lake Taylor is entering their fifth year of priority school status. And if you notice, there's an asterisk next to two thousand thirteen fourteen, as far as requested, because I wanted to point out that with Lake Taylor Middle, and then Lake, and you'll see the same thing noted for Lindenwood on the next screen with cohort two. They've completed the third year cycle, because it's supposed to be three years, that's the intended amount of time for turnaround practices to be embedded in the schools. But the State Department this past summer notified us that even though you see a requested amount, because we kind of went with level type funding, that they will probably receive anywhere from fifty to a hundred thousand dollars, which means that they will still be required to implement priority school practices, have a lead turnaround partner, and the division will be responsible for coming up with the difference. So we will know, once we receive feedback from the State Department, as to what we requested, because we know there's new leadership, funding may be different. So we felt optimistic and say we would just go along with requesting what we know the needs would be. So we'll, we won't know until we receive feedback from the state. But again, that's with the cohorts one and two schools, which cohort one again was Lake Taylor Middle, and cohort two was Lindenwood.
For your one thousand, two thousand, three thousand, there's no seven thousand? I just want to make sure I'm following correctly.
No.
Okay. And, all right, go ahead, Courtney.
When do we actually receive this funding? And is it in place for us to use September one?
The funded cycle.
The funding cycles usually go from October 1 until September 30th of the following year. Uh, yesterday was the ending of the particular funding cycle. So, we're now honestly waiting to receive feedback from the state as to what we requested. And then once we would get, we get feedback, if adjustments are needed, we'll make those adjustments. And then we'll receive an award notification letter. And then probably around November, December is when we'll actually receive the funding to continue.
So, at this point, what money are we using to support these schools that need this assistance?
As of September 30th yesterday, there is no funding to support them. We're, we're waiting for new allocations for this school year.
So, there's truly a gap at these schools until the state says yes to the request and allocates the funding?
For the supplemental amount that we, because remember, like Dr. Williford mentioned, SIG is supposed to supplement support, not be the primary support.
Right.
So, looking at local funding, Title I funding, safety net funding, whatever other funding sources are available. But primarily with lead turnaround partner services and VDOE contractor-type things are the primary things that are funded through the SIG. So, there should be some local funding to support some of those other efforts.
Has the cycle always been like this?
Yes.
In the state? And have we ever faced a situation where we didn't have enough baseline funding of our own that truly some of the schools suffered because the state was too slow frankly in its delivery of its costs? I mean, I'm, I guess the bigger question is, is there anything that we need to do to help the state move along? Or do we need to, I mean, it seems like this gap is remarkable. It's notable. And while you said we have other funding that can help bridge the gap, it just concerns me that if the gap gets greater or if the baseline funding that we have here continues to diminish, just due to funding issues, are we gonna have issues?
I would say that uh really to, to address your question from, from what I know, that's, those are things that are out of our control. And so, we just uh, we continue with the uh, to, to support the quality of the instructional program through uh implementing uh those things that, that we know, including the cycle for results. Uh, we have an Office of School Turnaround Improvement now with two school improvement administrators who provide support uh to the principals in terms of their school improvement plan. And so, although uh the funding specifically in terms of the lead turnaround partner and their services is not there, uh we continue to act uh in a supportive manner to bridge the, the gap uh that might occur from now uh until we're able to get the award letters and support the continuous uh, or have the continued support from the lead turnaround partner. So, the worthwhile, the funding necessarily is not there. Uh, the work that we do for our children uh continues.
And just one more question if you don't mind. So, are literally the lead turnaround partners not in the schools right now as a result of the fact that we don't have funding?
Yes, they cannot be in the schools.
They cannot enter the school?
Right.
Right, okay. Thank you.
And so, with that said, that's uh, that's an example of why we need to uh continue the safety net approach. Because uh the gap that uh comes to us in this way from the state, we don't anticipate that changing. And, and I'm not in any way attempting to be critical of that. I'm just, it's, we know what the cycle is. And so, then, the ball then is in our court to ensure that schools present their safety net plans in a timely manner and that they are submitted to the executive directors so that schools can have the monies that are necessary to be able to, to operate with the safety nets and enrichment while that gap is present. And so, if we do that work in a timely manner, then we are supporting schools. The other piece, in its own title. We are working to, to try to ensure that all of the approval of title uh plans, et cetera, that they're done to the point that we are able to give our schools access to title funds. We're shooting uh this year around mid-October-ish to no later than the 1st of November. So, if that happens, then we're able to put that gap. That did not happen last year. And so, um, that's, that's something that, that we have to be cognizant of so that we continue to ensure that these schools have funding. And they can, they can continue, of course, they have the local funding that we provide anyway. So, in order to be, and when you ask if, can they operate? Yes, they, absolutely, they can operate. But, but we want them to be able to hit the ground running with their safety nets and with their enrichment. And so, that's on us, because you, the board budgets and provide, and they provide the safety net money, we have to expedite the submittal of the plans and approval of the plans and free up those monies to schools after those plans are approved in a timely manner. And what I've done is urged the uh executive directors to, to emphasize to principals that they need to have those plans for utilize, usage of those funds in as quickly as possible so children can get what they need.
Okay, thank you.
So, there's a gap that exists between September 30th and when do we normally get the funding?
It depends. Once we receive our revisions, I mean our, you know, our revisions about our initially submitted grant application and everything.
What was the latest that we received our funding?
Sometime in maybe late November, early December.
Okay, so, we're looking at a two-month gap then. And this is state money, correct? Or is it federal money?
Federal from the state.
It's?
That's allocated through the state, those federal funds.
Okay. I was thinking that we have our legislative priorities. Was there any way that we can team up with other schools, districts that also have priority schools and discuss that with the Department of Education about perhaps changing the cycle so that the cycle comes when you have a gap directly after SOL times? And I know that other schools are different because they might operate on year-long calendars. But it makes more sense to me to not have the gap when you're trying to educate and prepare students for high-stakes testing during that time. And, and so, if you're going to have a gap at all, which I guess they have to have a gap, then why don't you make it during a time when they're not having to be so vigorous with their preparation for testing? Uh, so, I, I'm trying to think of what can the board do in order to help out this? Because some of these funds are significant, half a million dollars. And, and I'm sure that every little bit helps. So, is there anything that you can think of, Dr. King, or that we can do to change this mentality? Because just because it's this way doesn't mean it's right.
Well, yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a tough question. It's a, these, these dollars come from the, from the federal level. And with the cycle around which you submit, you know, we've been timely on getting those requests to them as far as SIG dollars and, and school improvement dollars are concerned. Uh, it's just a matter of how long it takes for the review and the turnaround and freeing up the dollars. I, I don't, I, right now, this moment, this second, in terms of what could, could the board do to, to try to speed that process up? I don't know that I have the answer to that. You know, outside of, of being smart about how we plug that gap with our local dollars and when we use our local dollars and being ready to, to, to hit the ground running with our uh interventions. Because during that period of time, you know, safety net money and all of what we provide can support schools if we get the reports in and the monies to them in a timely manner. Title I certainly supports schools. If we get, if we have our Title I funds freed up and provided to schools in a timely manner with all of the quest, requests and the paperwork that's, that's necessary. Uh, Dr. Savigny, you wanna comment on what we attempt wanting to do with Title and that whole support as well?
We're working very closely with the Title I office. Um, the state receives that funding from the federal government at the discretion of the federal cycle. Then it comes to the state and comes this way. So, we're working very closely to try and expedite that on our end. I can tell you that even though our application was submitted at the beginning of July and there was one revision made at the request of the State Department and it has since been resubmitted as of today, it has not been approved yet. So, we are waiting patiently for them to do that. But we are making plans to move forward um next week to have preliminary budgets loaded and ready to move forward with that, working very closely with Dr. Thornton and his team so that we can go ahead and fill the gap, so to speak, until those funds become available on the other end. Because we know that a certain percentage of that money is allotted to us automatically. So, we can go ahead and allot some of that money um through the budgetary process. So, those funds, as Dr. King mentioned, should be uh available within the next few weeks for schools to begin utilizing. But I, I do wanna just reinforce one thing that Dr. Halloran mentioned just a minute ago, that the SIG funding is supplemental funding. It's in addition to all of the base services that every school provide, is provided as part of the budgeting process. So, the schools are not, uh even though the lead turnaround partners are not in place right now, because these are services on top of everything else, the gap sounds a little bit daunting in the fact that it may not be as gap-oriented as we think it is, because these are on top of all the other services that are already provided by the school system. And we're very appreciative of those supplemental services. Thank you, Dr. Savigny.
So, how about if money is received, say, November, can the use and appropriation of the funded planning come around to September, October of the following year? So that the way you plan the use of it, since you know you may not get the money the next year until, say, November, then the planning of the use of the dollars would include September, October of the, of the next school year? Can, I mean, can you do that legally in terms of?
Well, actually, what happens is, as no, as Dr. Williford mentioned when he talked about the priorities, if you notice, it talks about next to the last bullet, it's support items within a funding cycle. So, the cycle starts October 1 and ends September 30th. So, they provide support up until, let's just say tomor, um yesterday.
Gotcha.
Right.
Okay.
But what will happen is, depending upon the, um, the dates in the award notification letter, if we don't get the funding until November, if they say, well, as of October 1, services can be maybe reimbursed or could have su, support within that timeframe, we can do that. But it's really tricky with the lead turnaround partner, because if they provide services and let's just say we don't get all the funding that we were requesting, then, you know, so, it's almost like a good faith thing if they just wanna continue to come out and provide support. I'm just, you know.
We have this gap for two months and these lead turnaround partners, they have designated us as priority or focus. So, they're the ones who put the, put the label on us. And then for us not to be able to have those supplemental funds, and I understand they're supplement, we're supposed to be doing everything that we can to make sure that we're meeting all the needs of those students and we have other funding. But it's still not right. Because we need the lead turnaround partners in the buildings when the kids are in school trying to prepare for these AMOs that they're going to be judged upon. And um, I guess this is a new soapbox now, but um, uh, if, if they can't be in the schools because we can't. So, there's no way that we can plan our monies to be used for them during this gap time if we plan kind of creatively?
Not funding, if the cycle ends September 30th, then that's it. What they do until we receive new funding allocations, the grant won't support it because we don't have approved funds to support during that time.
So, our funds should address our needs during that time. That's, that's.
But they can't address the lead turnaround?
No, but however, during our shared governance team meetings in September, the lead turnaround partners were, they were at the schools. They're in the process now of um, you know, pre-diagnostic assessments of the needs within each school. That information is being shared so the work can continue.
Okay.
At building and central level, and we do have the OSTI staff and team that support the school. And just as Dr. Savigny had mentioned, I mean, it's the, you know, supplement and support in addition to the support that's being provided.
And we should also note that each uh lead partner, lead turnaround partner will develop their scopes of work around the money that's, but the scopes of work that will help. When you ask for creatively how we use, it'll go back to that scope of work in terms of, of how we use the uh, how we use the funds or their, their services, whether they're, they're doing professional development from December to, to, to May or June, and even in some cases, what might happen during, during the summer. So, although there's a gap, apparent gap here, uh and now, once we get uh those funds, then we'll be able to develop and accept the scope of work that's centered around the school improvement plan and adjust accordingly.
I just wanna add a few more things. If you notice, um, for Todd Water Park and Cohort 2, it says they exited priority status, which means the funding support is over as far as SIG. And the same is with PB Young, since they are paired with Todd Water Park. They were identified last year as a Cohort 4 school, but they will not receive any funding moving forward as well. But we still have our OSTI staff, the team here, and central support that will be provided to the schools. And you see Lafayette Winona, the school closed, so uh, funding wasn't requested for them. And then we do have a Cohort 5 group. We have two new schools that are entering the priority status. We have Chesterfield, Chesterfield Academy and James Monroe. The OSTI team has already participated in one training enrichment or technical assistance session with them. So, at the next session, within a couple of weeks, I'm thinking they're gonna discuss funding and submitting the grant application. And we need to select the lead turnaround partner and determine what um turnaround model we're gonna use, because that needs to be decided before we can submit the application in November, December.
In closing, I would just like to take this opportunity to, to uh recognize the team. You know, Dr. Halloran, uh, Dr. Stapleton and Ms. Campson have been working uh arduously with our school principals in the setting of goals, uh, working with their school improvement plans, and ultimately, the grant uh application that was submitted uh previously. Uh, and we've received feedback from our principals this year in the help that they've collectively uh given to those schools in, in facilitating that process. So, I just wanted to recognize them and, and know that uh things are going well in terms of the support that OSTI is providing uh the schools during this period.
Warren and then Rodney?
Please go back to your first slide and your first board. I'm setting you up, Mr. Williford, for helping us support the Milestones conversation. And please read the item regarding additional learning time that is one of the turnaround principles. Could you please read that from your list? You have it there. You've given it to us numerous times.
Yeah.
I just want you to read that. Remember, this is a setup for our future discussion today on Milestones.
In terms of redesigning the school day?
Needing more time.
Yeah, to include additional time for student learning and teacher collaboration?
For years, we've known we need more time. We know we need more time. We'll talk about it during Milestones. Thanks.
Okay, um, I'm not sure where to start. I, I originally wrote uh funding to results. So, we uh, I don't wanna get deep into a discussion around funding cycles. What I really wanna try to get an understanding of, uh, we established the Office of School Improvement. You are providing services and supports. Todd Water and PB Young, uh, we were just talking about uh some of the successes that we've seen at Todd Water. I just wanna get a sense of what um, by definition, all of these schools are um challenged to the extent that they qualify for Title I. And then uh being in priority status means that compared to all the other Title I schools in the state, these schools had a certain ranking. So, Todd Water and PB Young exiting, which is a good thing in the sense that they no longer are considered priority, but it doesn't necessarily mean that the challenge went away. So, I'm just trying to, can you just talk about the support and services that comes from the office? So that we don't see the schools where Todd Water and PB Young in particular for right now, where the funds are going away. Are we losing anything in terms of supports or uh how they use those resources? Are we losing anything in terms of supports or how they use those resources in order to have the, the results that they, that they had? And if so, can you just give it to us straight in terms of is there anything that we need to be aware of that perhaps we need to have a conversation around to make sure that we're not into December or January or February, being concerned about grant proposals when it may be something that you need right now to continue the momentum, the possible momentum that, that we have? I mean, just.
I'll, I'll take a stab at that, but the first idea is to say that we are glad or proud, even if you want to put it in that, to know that Todd Water Park is exiting priority school, because that's a reflection of the, the progress that this school is showing. The idea in terms of turnaround is that the, the practices that are exhibited are sustained. And so there are definitely, I would say, best practices being implemented at Todd Water. We should note that they did have a, a lead turnaround partner for three years before exiting priority, so that's, and, and, and that was with support from the division for, for the last several years as well. We would like to think that the support that the Office of School turnaround and improvement will continue around those seven turnaround principles, even in a more streamlined manner. So what does that mean? We would, we would continue meeting shared governance with Todd Water Park so that we can monitor the implementation of their school improvement plan, monitor and help, help implement in, in some instances. We think that that's a practice that, that, that works, where we're, we're looking at student achievement, parent involvement, extending the learn, the learning day, the interventions that are going on each month, so that we can see the school become fully accredited. And that's, that's definitely our goal. So we have two school improvement administrators, in which one is assigned to work intimately with the administration there to, to ensure that that, when I say work intimately, I mean consistently, and I would have to say frequently as well, just to ensure that, that school improvement plan is, is monitored and any changes to it happens immediately so that we can ensure that this, the, the student achievement is moving forward towards full accreditation. So the only, and I hate to say only, but the, the big piece that's missing, and even as Dr. Halloran has shared here, in terms of what's allocated, would be some of that support in terms of the lead turnaround partner. But we do have mechanisms within school leadership development to support our schools in terms of safety nets, in terms of safety nets, and they're getting a little bit more in those, those schools that, that need that.
And there's, there's no gotcha. I just, really, I'm just trying to say, if, if, if it's something that you need, can you just tell us so that we can figure out what we need to do to try to provide it?
I think that one unfortunate occurrence is that once a school makes progress in the exit, that they, that we cease the financial support. Hopefully, and we, we have begun to have these discussions at the state level, of course, it doesn't happen now today, but we would like to see that continue, you know, at least into the next school year, so that we can continue the necessary support. One, one intention around utilization of these funds is to plan for exit and to do your rollout and your interventions in a manner in which, when the dollars are gone, you can sustain. So if you're doing it in terms of embedded, deeply professional learning, training, and you're keeping and you're retaining your staff, then when you, when those, those dollars leave, then you, 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 you are able to continue your benefit. So that's the discussion that we're having, but would we like to see it continue at least for, for an additional year after a school exit? Certainly, absolutely. So, you know, then, then, then what do we need? I, I, I feel the need would be around being able to continue to look at what we are calling our enrichment and safety net dollar fund, to see, is it adequate? You know, how much usage have we had across schools? And that's the piece that would allow much of what Todd Water has done to continue if it consisted of some services from the outside that came into the school for tutoring purposes, for example, whatever the case might be. And that's a use that's, that safety net dollars can, can play. But also, you know, we have the, the coaches in place, and there was a certain approach for utilization of coaches, numeracy, math, math coaches and literacy coaches in each of the schools that garnered certain results. So the continuation of that usage is important and shouldn't cost. That's another example of how we should be able to sustain it after the dollars are removed. But to answer your question, in terms of what, what we need, and I'm going to also ask anybody else to, to, to chime in here with other thoughts, would be pay close attention to that, the whole notion of safety nets and enrichment. That, that does not need to go away anytime soon. If, if anything, we need to grow that opportunity, but be accountable for how we use those dollars and plan for schools to exit, knowing that we're planning for schools to exit, then we need to continuously focus on access to, to, to that, that kind of approach. Now, one reason why we established the Office of School Turnaround was to be able to focus on schools in this way to continue to offer that support. And so with the specialists that are in the, the turnaround department, being Dr. Halloran as well as Dr. Stapleton, as well as Ms. Campson, they're playing a, a, a specific role in supporting those schools. And, and you may want to just touch on what that means. And if there's anything else in terms of what the board can do, then now's the time to offer those suggestions outside of what I just mentioned.
Well, it, it starts off again with those seven turnaround principles, and the school improvement administrator's first charge is to make sure that the principals are, are, are indicated within the school improvement plan and building capacity, capacity for our principals to, 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 to implement the turnaround principles. And again, it may look different in each school, but some, some of the recent discussions and, and support that's been provided centers around master schedules, ensuring that we have, we're spending enough time in, in reading and in mathematics, looking at the, 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 the design of, of, of the, of the school day in terms of interventions that are being provided and finding time in, in cases to, to, to implement interventions. That's, that's been some of the work that, work that they're, they're doing and some of the conversations, conversations that are, that are going on. Additionally, again, going back to the whole grant application process, because this starts with the setting of goals, so analyzing your data so that you able to set, or set, I would say, realistic, specific goals that, that the school can achieve in a specific amount of, of time, and then creating the plan centered around those goals. Those, that plan becomes the, the application, or, or what you take from the school improvement grant application and, and put, put into, that, that plan becomes what's put into the school improvement grant application. And so then the work that we do, and I'm saying daily, but when we're meeting each month, is centered all around those principals just talking about that and, and, and seeing growth from it. And then, and also establishing steps if there's also extra support that's needed outside of the lead turnaround partner, but working with teaching and learning, the research accountability department, just being able to, to have that support as well. So it's everybody coming together as a, as a, a shared governance team, a collective to, to make real-time decisions that's going to move student achievement forward.
So, so, so two things the board can do based on that. One, pay close attention to the, to the safety net slash enrichment pot, okay? That's one thing. Two, professional learning, because those are, that's where the rubber meets the road with, with, with these schools. And of course, continuing to empower the, the leader of the school to make decisions around the professional learning plans that, that will allow these things to continue and be sustained and have access to necessary funds to support that. So professional learning dollars and that whole safety net enrichment piece. Who's, who's, who's assigned to Todd Water, for example, in your department?
Ms. Campson.
Okay, okay. I don't want to put anybody on the spot. Ms. Campson, any, any additional comments along that line, based on what you've seen as far as support and what the board could do in your role? I know you've been only in it for a few months, but I'm sure you've gleaned some things in your experiences with looking at it.
First of all, I'd like to say that we are continuing to. First of all, I'd like to say that we are continuing to support both those schools. I have both of them because they're sister schools. And during August, I was in, working with both of those staffs at the entire school, providing data-driven decision-making and data team training for those schools, because I am a trainer in both those areas, along with some other schools. But in those, particularly because our hope was that they were going to come out and then they would lose the lead partner. I've met with both of them to help them with their master schedules to try and capture more time in reading and math, which is something that we noticed our high-performing schools are all doing longer instructional periods in reading, and many of our low-performing schools are not. And so that's something that both Dr. Stapleton and I have been working on with all the schools, and especially in these. And, and I, and I know that we're both working in our schedules to try and spend at least a half a day each week in each of our schools. So I've already been in three of my schools this week for half a day. I'm sure Dr. Stapleton was about the same, so that we are able to talk about any concerns they have and look at these particular areas, where are they with data, how are they using it? Because a lot of them are learning to collect and organize data, but they haven't made the transition to implement how, to let it really truly drive. You know, they, they've got the collecting, it's very hard to know how to do that, and so how do we translate the data we collect and the district provides as well? How do we translate that into classroom practice? So that's, that's kind of the direction that we're headed. But please note, both of the schools are, Dr. Williford was very firm that even though I was having a little celebration, I'm like, ooh, my two schools already exited, as if it was mine, not Sharon Phillips'. Oh, yeah, you've just been here a month, but yeah, take care. I'm like, ooh, I already got two schools out. But it was, as we all know, Sharon Phillips' work that, that got the schools out. But, but he, but Dr. Williford very firm that, yeah, you can do your little dance, but get yourself back out to the schools. So I think that you're going to see us continue to, to offer that support that the lead partners previously did.
Yeah, I just, you know, just want to say, if anything, you know, policy, if it's resources, we just went through the whole strategic planning piece that touches on some of those things, you know, just let us know as soon as we can, so if there's anything that we have to do to adjust, we can, we can talk about it.
This is more editorial, Colin. This is really, really good that, that you guys are doing this and providing that support. I hope that the, the teacher education programs at the college level and the, and the principal and the master's programs for educational leadership are now employing those strategies because it seems to me that we take, we have to take these teachers and teach them how to teach, how to look at data. That's, that's, it seems a little backwards.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item 2105. So Rodney and Ed, when we planned the agenda, of course, we didn't know how many policies we'd be ready for today. And so it is good to see that a number of them are ready, because I know there's a lot of policies that we still have left down the list to, that have been recommendation, recommended for review and for revision. So we sort of have the time to do what's necessary with these. Having said that, I'll turn it over to our policy committee. Mr. Jordan, Reverend Hayward.
Do you have anything you want to add before we go?
No more than just reminding the board, of course, and the process that's in place. I think it's one that's going to allow us to be even more effective with how we review policies, and, and the board committee is taking a look at policies that are, I would say, of interest or will have certain levels of sensitivity to review those policies and with the administration, and then bring recommendations to my administration, and then it comes back to cabinet. So I think it, it's, I think it's, it's a smooth rollout in terms of what it, what it can do, and, and so we're ready to report.
So Reverend Hayward and I have been working with Dr. Birdsong and Jack Cloud and Janelle. So we're going to test whether or not our new process, how effective it is, but part of what we sought to do as a committee is to come to the board at a work session and pretty much tell you what we've done and highlight to you where we think we need to spend some time and attention in the, in the work session. We know that everybody would have had the opportunity to do your own review. So quickly, we're going to turn over to Dr. Birdsong to, to walk us through this. But at a very high level, I think we're comfortable in saying that we think that all the policies that are before you today, with the exception of some of the ones that they're going to highlight for you, we feel comfortable that they are ready for moving on to the, to the business meeting. There were some policies that, that we held, a couple, you know, you always refer to us the school naming, and I share with you that we do plan to come back to that at the, at the next work session, but it was a more opportunity we wanted to give the administration to look at on the regulation side of the, of the House. And we also determined that this would not interfere with some of the time issues that we know we heard from in regards to Lafayette Winona and some other things, so we feel good about that. And then the other one, we touched on a little bit earlier, you heard Dr. Simmons mention the advisory committee that was being formed for the open campus school. And so we also held that because we wanted to do some additional review of that, but we intend to bring that back at the, at the next work session as well. The others, we kind of tried to highlight for you in the memo, and, and just real quickly again, from what we're, the process that.
Can I just ask a quick question on this? So we'll see that like we are now in terms of a work session to then be voted upon likely then on the midweek business.
Correct.
Okay. And is Mr. Schmigle aware of the timing of that, knowing his planning?
Well, so from our perspective, we, we left that to the administration.
Okay. That was just a question.
Right, no. So we, we asked, you know, Dr. King and others how to coordinate that internally, and we've tried not to delve into that. But what we have asked the, asked them to do, and what we'll do is at our next policy committee meeting, is as much as possible, try to have a recommendation back that is universal and doesn't become school-specific, otherwise we think it kind of defeats the whole process of having the, the universal policy. But to my knowledge, we're okay with the timeline that we're bringing to you today for consideration.
So I'll be seeing Mr. Schmigle tomorrow, I'm sorry, on Friday, for the meetings that we have for the school redevelopment. And I can tell him that what we're going to do is we're going to be bringing it back at our next work session in November, and then.
So our, our expectation is that you won't have to tell him anything.
Okay.
That they would have already communicated with them, whatever the, whatever the process, whatever the process is. And in, and in that regard, the memo that we sent to you, we, we pulled out a chart from one of the board governance books, and so our expectation is, moving forward, that, you know, ninety-five percent of the things that we'll be reviewing are either going to be updates that we get from VSB, VSBA, or recommendations that are coming from the administration. In the instance where we have like the naming policy, where you ask the committee to give special attention, or if there's some other policy that comes up. or if there's some other policy that comes up from the board that you ask us to give special attention to, we would then work with, through that committee, work out a draft, make sure everybody internally is in an opportunity to review it, bring it back to you for consideration at a work session. And then whatever point in time that the board, the full board decides that it's ready for implementation, then we would follow our normal process to get it on the, on the business agenda. So... Reverend Haywood, you, I catch all of that?
So one, one thing about that naming policy is that it does need to be looked at by Mr. Cloud.
Yes, right, and Dr. Birdsong can speak to, to, to the extent, the internal process where they're going through their check-offs with the departments and for, uh, for legal review.
To facilitate timewise, I believe what you're telling me is these in front of us tonight, for consideration and vote on the business meeting, are all ones that have been met muster through the state VSBA as a result of legislative action. Mr. Cloud and your committee has said okay with them. Uh, the reason why I asked you that is, for me, that means things are hunky-dory. So I, I know we've got a lot of important things, and if we're going to spend an hour on this, but I've read every single one of these...
I'm anticipating this is going to be about ten minutes at most, and we'll be done. Uh, if our process is working with it.
Yeah, right.
But, but I do want to say again that there are some that we ask them to give special attention to, and some that Mr. Cloud has identified that the Norfolk Public Schools policy is more extensive than others, and they're going to, they're going to speak to those, but...
So you didn't want to say it was one immediate for a time, it's a...
No, I think we're, if, that's what I said, we're going to test our work, but I think it might, might be about ten minutes.
But I, I, I... To clarify, though, so not everything is a pass-through, because locally, there might have been modifications made.
Correct.
At the committee level that they're recommending to us.
Excited about this, so come on.
And just process-wise, what we've asked for, from Dr. King and the administration, if there's anything that they think, uh, might be controversial that we still want to look at, or from conversation that they've heard us at as a board, that they just wanted to... Like, I knew that there's been some questions raised about, uh, you know, lactation facilities. So we, so we pulled that out. And so, you know, that's kind of how we're trying to work through this, work through this process. But at any point in time, if anybody has anything that you want to be considered at a deeper level, you know, we're just recommending to the full board, for, you know, any, any of us still have the, the ability to pull something out and ask for deeper clarification if that's what, what you need.
Right? I just want, clear, okay, first of all, to use Warren's vernacular, I predict this is going to streamline this process tremendously. And it's my hope that we can move this forward very quickly and rapidly. Um, my question is, are we going to be held or bound to the process of reviewing these in the work session and then waiting until the, um, the regular board meeting to vote on them? If there was an issue that came up that we needed to, that, that was more of a timely nature we wanted to push through, would it be okay for us to vote in the board, or the work session to, to...
I would say it would definitely be okay, certainly. You know, we have a common practice of voting in the business meeting. That doesn't mean, you know...
I just want to, I just want to make sure that that, that option is still there, if necessary. I'm not speaking of any particular policy, I'm just thinking, I don't want to be locked into a, a process without having some flexibility.
No, and just, and the last thing I'll mention prior to turning it over is what we've tried to do in the scheduling of our policy committee meetings, we're trying to be two weeks or so ahead. So that, um, and when we have our meetings, we're going to load our minutes up to board docs. And so to give every member of the board an opportunity to see what our work was. And so if there's any question or concern from the time that we've met as a committee to the time we get to the work session, the administration would have had an opportunity to do any additional consideration by the time we get to this, to this meeting. I'm done.
Good afternoon, Reverend Houston, Mrs. Doyle, Dr. King, members of the school board. As Mr. Jordan stated to you, just to kind of give you, again, a, a brief overview of our process and why you have so many policies to review today. As we, um, started our work, it's been over a month ago, Mr. Haywood and, and Mr. Jordan, um, we wanted to ensure that all of the policies, policies that should have been reviewed last year had already been before you for consideration, adoption, et cetera. So as we worked through that process, we immediately realized that there were a number of policies that had not been reviewed, um, by you from last school year. So we decided to start with, um, the May, um, the SBA recommendations and work our way backwards. So that's why you have these policies before you today. They were actually recommended by the VSBA last school year for revision and review. And so we wanted to put those before you today, and we're hoping by December, all of the policies that should have been reviewed last year, you would have seen and had a chance to provide some input and adopt as you see appropriate. And so, again, we're hoping to, um, provide the information that you need today. If you have questions about specific policies, we are certainly more than happy to answer any questions that you may have. In addition to that, we do have the executive directors, as well as Dr. Savigny. They are currently looking at the school naming policy. We have provided, um, the four executive directors and Dr. Savigny with a copy of the current policy, as well as Mrs. Doyle's recommendations for, um, regulations. So they have all of that information. We expect to secure that information from them so that it can be presented to our policy review committee. It will then be, um, discussed with the cabinet, and will be prepared by the work, the next work session to address that with you and have a recommendation for you. So today, um, we're going to start with Dr. Myers-Dobbs, Executive Director of Human Resources, and Dr. Lanz, our Executive Director of Student Support Services. There, there are a few policies that, um, involve students and staff. And so I thought it would be beneficial for the both of them to be here at the same time to address those policies. But there's one HR policy that Dr. Myers-Dobbs will bring to your attention. Dr. Myers-Dobbs?
Good afternoon. I'm going to be reviewing GCE, Part-Time and Substitute Professional Staff Employment. And with this policy, there was an update to reflect a legal reference. That was the only change. And the only other thing that I'd like to bring attention to is if you look at number six, it discusses, um, when a substitute is needed on a long-term basis. It has that a teacher who will be absent for twenty workdays or more will require a long-term substitute. Right now, it has been our practice that we have a long-term substitute with fifteen workday absences. So I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention.
All right, the, the other three policies that, um, Dr. Lanz and Dr. Myers-Dobbs will be, um, briefly reviewing are policies GBEC, Tobacco-Free Schools, um, GBEF, um, Lactation Support, as well, no, actually, there are only two, and the electronic cigarettes, right, Dr. Lanz?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll turn it over to you.
Good afternoon. Um, we'll start with the JFCH, the Tobacco-Free School, um, and for staff and students. And this is not a new policy, um, but it involves, uh, the prohibition of smoking, chewing, or any other use of, uh, tobacco products on school property. And, uh, there was just one, um, item that we'd like to bring to your attention on the document where it says, um, in the paragraph after section four, uh, we noted to add in-building locations. So where it talks about, um, clearly and conspicuously in every school cafeteria and other dining facility in the school, um, we talked about possibly adding in-building locations rather than just those specific, um, locations there. And this particular policy was, um, just intended to update the code to reflect the change in the electronic cigarettes portion, and it applies for students and staff.
There's no, uh, budgetary impact or anything like that, that we need to...
No, sir. We talked briefly about, um, you know, the signage, but that there are, um, signs posted at, um, most locations anyway, so, um, no, sir.
Lactation Support?
Yes, um, that policy also, there's a student and staff, um, portion as well, and mainly requires the designation, um, of a location for a student or staff member to express milk. And so, uh, this is a new policy, and it just involves, um, in terms of the code, just providing that opportunity, um, in appropriate place for students or staff. Next, we'll look at EB, School Crisis Emergency Management and Medical Emergency Response Planning. And this is not a new policy, and, um, it just involves, um, the, uh, reflecting the updates to the amendment, um, for the code. And, um, as you know, we already have a school safety audit and, um, crisis plan process in place. So this was, um, strictly just revisions to that particular, um, code. Okay, next, EBB, Threat Assessment Teams. This is not a new policy, and the code involves threat assessment teams and oversight committees. And, um, the main thing with this particular policy is just, again, to update revisions to the code to reflect those particular updates. No other updates were suggested by us. Okay? Next, JHG, um, Child Abuse and Neglect Reporting, not a new, uh, policy. And this just deals with, um, staff mandated reporting of suspected child abuse or neglect. And you'll note that GAE is the personnel or human resources aspect of that. And there was a note to assist readers in locating that in both the student and staff sections for that policy. Okay? Um, GBEA, Unlawful Manufacturer Distribution, Dispensing Possession or Use of a Controlled Substance, not a new policy. And again, um, just legal references updated, and there were no specific changes that we recommended for that policy either. Um, GBEA. Next, JEA, Compulsory Attendance, not a new policy. And, um, just deals with mandatory school attendance, uh, by five years old, by September thirtieth. And we did suggest, um, just one change to that one in terms of removing, uh, the last paragraph on that one. And there was a paragraph that referenced, um, whenever a court orders a pupil into alternative education program, uh, we recommended that that paragraph be removed. Uh, next, we have JO, Student Records, not a new policy. And this policy just involves maintaining the accurate and complete records for every student in our school district, but based on state and, um, federal laws. And this, again, was just legal references updated. Then, uh, policy KJC, Use of Tobacco and Electronic Cigarettes on School Premises, not a new policy, but revised from tobacco use on school premises to add the electronic cigarettes to the title.
Just in case you had any questions.
Yeah, I was, yeah, it's, I was going to say, unless, other than, you know, unless somebody has a question or something that they saw, the only other thing I thought was to just make sure that, uh, Mr. Cloud had the opportunity to explain the, the ones that, uh, that we're, that we have some differentiation on, but...
Yes, sir, and those were the, the, the last three that, um, we were coming to were the three that Mr. Cloud had specific, um, comments for us and explanations for.
But just, Mr. Chip, I just wanted to point out the, some of the ones that, that are being highlighted around, uh, crime, discipline, um, uh, smoke-free, those were some of the ones that we had had some recent conversations about. And that's why we just wanted to make sure that those are being highlighted. And then the other thing that, that we talked about in the committee, that Dr. Stewart always mentions, these are fluid, so at any point in time, that there's a desire for us to come back and to look at something, then just because we adopt these things on the next business meeting, doesn't mean at any point in time, we can't come back and make adjustments to them.
I do think it's useful, uh, that that...
Just that you've reached one?
I do.
Okay.
Just, they're, you're doing it very quickly, so...
Yeah, that, that, well, I mean, especially the, they help, just help the board understand that, whether it's just a statutory change or a recommendation, you know, of, of some...
Does it say that already in the preamble, each policy?
You don't find it, just...
Just consider the second reading.
Okay. I'm, I'm good with it.
Of the law, good running.
And then the last three were the ones that we noted, Mr. Cloud, um, had a brief explanation for. We'll start with JFCV, Weapons in Schools.
Well, actually, I think I can, uh, address them all three, just in one statement. Um, these are all policies that have always differed somewhat from the VSBA policies. The VSBA was reacting to a change in state law that really doesn't affect us because the language that the VSBA was adding was already in our policies. Um, the drugs and weapons in school statutes, they, uh, they're sometimes confusingly referred to as mandatory expulsion statutes. Uh, and they do, they're not particularly well-written. And they start off saying, "The school, a school board shall expel." But they actually, and the General Assembly made some changes to try to make this clearer, but we've always been aware of it in terms of our policies, they're, they're not mandatory. That, uh, it is possible, and in this case, Norfolk School Board has delegated the authority to the administration to review any possible expulsion, uh, under these two, two, uh, policies, and determine in any particular case that the facts and circumstances don't warrant an expulsion and recommend some other lesser discipline, like a long-term suspension. Apparently, some school boards, even though it was buried in there, it was not aware of that. And I guess they were, there was, uh, in some places, they were treating it as absolutely mandatory. And so the, the General Assembly amended it somewhat to make it clearer that it's really not mandatory, that, um, that you do have that choice. In, in an individual case, it depends on each case's facts and circumstances. Um, the other policy, one of the changes to the JGD policy wa, had to do with, with that language that, uh, we already have. But the, the other aspect that's different from ours, our, our student suspension and expulsion policy is really just a policy about the procedure you follow in suspending or expulsing, expelling students. And all of the detailed aspects that are in the VSBA policy are actually in other policies in her policy manual. Um, so for all those three, my recommendation is that we make no changes.
Yes, we, yeah.
Now, did that involve, excuse me, one of the ones I sent an email about yesterday, where we had both may and shall in the same sentence?
Yes, and that was, um, the JFCD.
So did we clarify what word needs to be there?
It was the may.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And there's one more, Human Resources Policy. We have one more. That was it, did you see? Okay, so thank you, ladies. I'm going to ask, um, Dr. Corbin to come forward. She has a policy to review with Dr. Savigny. Actually, there are two, IGAG and IGBGA. And Mrs. James Mitchell, if you want to go ahead and come forward too as well.
With IGAG, then, uh, all policy policies are not new, they simply are updated language and very minor tweaks to the language in regard to updates from, um, policy or code. But with IGA, it's simply removing the words of drug education and replacing them with related to alcohol and drug abuse and smoking and health, and then adding one explanation sentence in regard to what our health education program entails. And there's no new practice associated with this, it's just simply having the policy ref... associated with this, it's just simply having the policy reflect the language of health education versus drug education.
And the IGBGA, Dr. Corbin?
I have online courses. That would be the online courses and virtual student programs policy. That policy currently states that we will not charge tuition to any student living in the city of Norfolk who participates in a virtual learning program. The policy was updated to reflect the change in the law. The law was amended to say that we would not charge tuition to any student with special needs, any of our special needs students who live in Norfolk or outside of Norfolk who participates in our full-time virtual learning program.
Thank you.
We can charge non-disabled students?
Non-disabled students who live outside of the city of Norfolk.
Outside of the city.
Okay, and Mrs. James Mitchell, this was one of the policies that we wanted to bring to your attention. It was the programs for students with disabilities. Mrs. James Mitchell.
Okay, good evening. Good evening. I will be reviewing the policy IGBAZ and its programs for students with disabilities. And as the policy, whereas red line, those changes are acceptable, but there was one section on the second page, the last paragraph, and it was red line, but I believe that that red line section should still be included within this policy and moved to page one to be the fifth paragraph, and that is highlighted in blue. After consulting with Mr. Cloud, he stated that it does not change the policy and that it's still okay to be there. I believe that it should be there because, as we know, if a child is found eligible for special education services, they qualify, they receive an IEP within 30 days. So basically, this policy covers what we do as a one-pager in the school division as it relates to students with disabilities with just a couple of highlights, because there's a lot more that we do because we have to be responsible for the state and federal regulations.
So the paragraph right above the legal reference, it says, an IEP shall be designed and maintained. We just move that up?
Yes, sir. Move it to the first page.
To the first page.
Yes.
Any other questions from Mrs. James Mitchell? Our final policy this afternoon is policy IGE, Adult Education. Dr. Savigny will review that.
Again, this is not a new policy, it's simply an updating language, taking the references to the GED program out and replacing it with adults having the opportunity to earn a high school diploma or to pass a high school equivalency examination. It just kind of opens it up a little bit. But again, this is not a new policy, we already have this practice and these programs in place. They function in the evenings for us already at Norfolk Technical Center. So it's just switching out GED with diplomas or equivalency exams.
Are there alternative equivalency exams?
In regard to this particular program, if student, this particular policy references either a high school equivalency or a high school diploma. So for us right now, where we are with this program, it would still be either the GED program or the high school equivalency.
I understand, I understand. I'm just wondering, are there any alternatives other than GED?
At this point, based on the funding that we have for the adult education program in the evening, those are the two options that we have right now.
Are there other available?
In this particular program with our current funding source, those are the two.
Did that answer my question?
There are other options available.
I'm not asking you to go, I didn't know if there was any of them.
There are, but our adults in this program.
Because I only heard of GED, that's why I asked.
I'm sorry, I just-
I should have prefaced it.
Do anyone watching draw the conclusion that there's another option out there?
I should have prefaced that.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the information.
I'd like to thank the members of our committee. I think we have worked very well to get all of this together in a very short amount of time, and so we have been working very, very hard to organize this process, and I think it will be a better process for you. And I'd also like to thank the members of the cabinet who took a lot of time to review the policies, to bring recommendations to the cabinet, and just did a phenomenal job. So we were very pleased with the process so far.
Great work.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all very much, and thank you Rodney and Ed for your work, Policy Committee. Yes, so are we in agreement that we should take a break at this time? Yes, yes. All right, let's take a-
Just for those, so all of those policies that we just reviewed will be on the-
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda, unless somebody between now and then tells us to pull it out.
Yes, thank you all very much. Well done. All right, let's take a 10-minute break, and we'll continue.